Call the order, the meeting of the City Council for October 21st, 2014. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Betsy, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Grundin?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Okay, correction and/or approval of the City Council minutes of October 7th, 2014? Any corrections? Do we hear a motion of approval?
Still moved.
A second, please.
Second.
Your roll call vote, please.
Yeah, we'll need a roll call vote on...
Mr. Grundin?
Abstain.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Council, do we need to do the work session minutes also?
Or should have we done that in the work session?
Was that included?
Yes.
Because it's only listed as one minutes, kind of sounding plural.
Well, then, let's go back and, uh, let's go ahead and, uh...
Work section.
Any corrections for the work session minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the work session minutes.
In a second.
A second.
And Betsy, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Abstain.
Motion passed, 4-0.
And for correspondence, Diane?
Yeah, um, I had some people asking about the meeting for the rate case, and the date for that is November 11th at 1:00 in this room, I believe, or is it downstairs?
No, it's in here.
In here. So, for those of you who wanted to come to the, uh, public, it's a public hearing? Is that the correct term? Okay, the public hearing, it's going to be November 11th at 1:00 here in City Hall. If you prefer to go to Madison, you can go there too, but most of you probably don't.
And that's the PSC?
PSC, yes, mhm, for the rate case. And, um, I did have some people ask about the roadwork and so forth that was being done. Several were commenting, they were happy to see, and I think we, we had the county come in and do some of the, what's the black stuff?
Asphalt.
Yeah, asphalt. Um, and they were happy that those patches got done and so forth and so on. So, uh, at least the people I talked to were pleased that that had gotten done.
No, just...
Uh, had some questions about roadwork and that ties into the budget. Several of the roads that were asked are on tap for, one of them being East Madison, West Madison Street for next year. Mr. Wilkie, what is the, what is the term for what's going to be done on West Madison?
Mill and overlay.
Mill and overlay, okay. So, that was one of my questions. Okay, that was mine.
Steve?
Um, just a number of people talking about trees, the South Main Street project, good conversations, but that was, that was about it.
Yep.
Uh, only one, that was Steve, they marked, a question was asked, they had noticed that the West Madison had been marked and wondered when construction was going to be done on that. Was the marking to get the estimate of cost, or?
Yeah, it came in at about ninety-eight, ninety-nine thousand.
That's why we were talking at the budget time.
I know, we talked about it being in next year's budget, so that's why I asked. Thank you. Now, I'll give that back to them.
Uh, the only call I had was concerning the, uh, the budget numbers, and the person was wondering whether their property tax was going down this year, so. And they were pleased that it was going down.
Keep in mind that we're just one part of that...
Right.
...that equation, so...
Yeah.
Uh, ours, ours may go down, but we have no control over the, uh, the school or the M.A.T.C. or whoever else has their hand out.
You know, we'd say that our portion is going down.
Yeah, our portion's going down.
Right. I'm pretty sure M.A.T.C. is going down based on Act 145, but the other ones, you never know. But I, I anticipate overall that it'll go down some.
Okay, good. Um, I had, I had, um, an email concerning, um, the markings on Catlin, that we have a, um, we have an answer to that, and I will get back to that individual. Um, the letter will go in the record as given, and I think everybody got a copy.
And also, there was a letter from the trailer court?
The, the trailer court, that's also in, um, and I think, I think I answered it, but I can, I'll follow up on that myself, but it's also been put in the record.
Hmm.
Okay, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda, unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until that hearing. Um, public comments may be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address, and when starting your comments, please fill out the, the sign and sheet provided at the podium. And at this time, do we have anybody that would like to address the council?
My name is Linda Keith. I am the sole member of a original Colorado-based LLC called L.K., LLC, and that is currently, for the record, L.K. Two LLC. Owner has been transferred here to Wisconsin, and ownership is now L.K. Two LLC. P.O. Box 123, Lake Mills. A lot has transpired since October 16th, when the memo was written regarding Item H, discussion, decision on memorandum of understanding regarding the easement of my, my property. I appreciate all the efforts of the city to attempt to meet my request for a guarantee of a second driveway in order to go forward with a proposed pump station at the sole entrance of my property. However, the only way to guarantee a second driveway is to build it, and that can't be done without a site development plan, which unfortunately, I can't produce at this time. So, in the interest of time and safety, I offer another solution, which I would sign immediately, whereby I would gift the city the necessary land at the northwest corner of my property to begin construction tomorrow, if at all possible. The advantages, though perhaps more costly initially, provide a permanent solution to several problems with the current proposal. Number one, safety is compromised by the proposed location so close to Highway V with its 35 mile-per-hour speed limit and major thoroughfare across the street from the Lake Mills Business District. The control panel has already been run over and thrown into the cornfield I now own, and that was before any development and major driveways were in place. Highway V will be the primary tributary when construction on South 89 begins, so the chances of another vehicle taking out the proposed expensive pump station and generator will be greatly increased. Number two, the value of my property will not be lessened with a pump station in the corner versus the significant diminishment of my property value with construction at the sole entrance to my property now. My estimate is that $100,000 or more may be at stake if the proposal goes through as planned, and my ability to sell the land will be jeopardized. The advantages to the corner are safety, number one, it's at a lower elevation, there are already two easements that the city owns on both, on two sides, and there would be less future headaches. It would, it should be a done deal, and we wouldn't have to readdress the aesthetics. That would be the concern if it's right in front of my property. So, I make a motion to table the driveway proposal, and for now, until a site development plan is in place, and instead, consider my offer to gift the northwest corner of my property to begin immediate construction of the proposed pump station at the new site.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else? Seeing none, that closes questions and public comment. Um, going to the city manager's report, Steve?
Have you been, um, out on, um, South Madison Street, where we put in the new sidewalks next to Century?
Yes.
Okay, did that work?
Looked nice.
Okay. They started on College and Madison on the, um, crosswalk. Um, there was a little bit, apparently, they poured concrete under that asphalt all the way around the corner, so the project is going to be a little bit more difficult than we originally anticipated, but there's, they started working on it. Uh, the ridge started, the developer for the ridge has started putting in the final sidewalks, not overly pleased with the methods and practices they're using. Um, in fact, I'm highly distressed at what they've done, um, but at least they're, looks like they're going to get it finished this year, maybe.
When you say distressed, distressed as in the quality that that's going to be handed over to the city, or?
Or safety.
I can't comment to this quality of that's going to be handed over yet. What I'm talking about is the methods that they're using to install it. Um, when you use a full-size bulldozer to install sidewalks, um, and you dock every water valve on the project off and tear up the water services and damage people's property and you, your contracting style is not very high-quality. And so, I have some real concerns about that, and, uh, I guess we'll wait and see. Obviously, we hold their letter of credit, and we'll make sure that they perform to the highest standards, but I wasn't very happy with what they've done so far.
And so, what I'm hearing is that they, they have damaged city property?
Yes, they have damaged city water property.
Okay, and they will be, they will make that whole?
And I don't think they have any choice.
Okay, okay. Hmm, don't know what to say about that.
Um, we did a tour in the public works of sites, and I thought that, considering that was raining and it was dark, that it went relatively well. Um, we got to look at quite a few issues that are out there for us. We were down to our final, getting down to our final budget numbers. I think we have one left, and that's the expenditure restraint number, but other than that, it looks like the budgets come together pretty well, and we're, we're doing well for next year, so. Are there any other questions?
Steve, could you mention the next budget one for the public? Because it is open to the public, and it will be kind of a review of the budget in two weeks, November 4th.
Six o'clock, uh, November 4th, we will do probably our last study session. Um, there will be the second reading. Uh, the actual public hearing on the budget will be November 18th at 7:00 here before the council, um, and that will be the third and final reading. Generally, we like to get it put out, approved that night and get it to the county so that they can get it out and start running the tax bills as soon as possible, so that people get them in plenty of time so that they can make their payments before the end of the year. So, we try and work with the county on that. But that's the schedule that's remaining, yeah.
Anything else? Anything else for Steve?
Just that, uh, no, I don't have any...
Oh, I have something. Uh, I, I've got a kudo for the, uh, the light department. Um, there, just a quick story, there was a, 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 a dog that chased a cat, a young cat, up a telephone pole, and that cat was on top of that telephone pole in excess of three hours and obviously was never going to come down. Called it Humane Society, and they didn't know what to do. Finally, one of our, uh, one of our brave individuals from the light and power department climbed up the telephone pole and rescued that poor cat, so ended it with a happy ending.
Good.
Thank you. So, kudos to the, to the, um, power company, city power company.
Uh, I do have one question. Um, the street crews have been out picking up leaves, and that generally will go until we can't pick up leaves anymore? Is that kind of right?
Yes.
Like snow?
Generally, it goes until it snows.
Yeah, okay, that's what somebody asked me, and that's what I said, so, okay, thank you.
There's a certain time of the year when it gets really heavy, and we tend to be out there a lot more hours, uh, which is mid, mid-November, but...
Especially if we are predicted to have snow, then they sometimes are out at night doing it, just to get those leaves up before.
On Saturdays, yeah.
But generally, now, it's just during the day, right?
Yep. Right now, we're keeping up with it without any problem.
Good opportunity to remind people the leaves stay on the grass. Please do not rake them into the street. In Lake Mills, you don't do that because it goes into the lake water. So, um, and please tell your neighbors, friends, and family so that they leave the leaves on the tree lawn.
Thank you, Diane.
There is a brush pickup coming up in early November, too, and it's on the website and on, in the newspaper.
Okay. Okay, if nothing else, acceptance of committee minutes. I have before me the minutes from the Rock Lake Committee meeting of August the 5th, 2014, and the Lake Mills Housing Authority of August 26th, 2014, that'll go on record as read. Item 8, council business, board and committee appointments, and I see none. Is that correct? Nothing. Uh, miscellaneous licenses. Betsy, would you read that application?
A tavern operator's license application from Kathleen Captur.
And do I have a motion of acceptance?
Still moved.
A second, please.
Second.
Betsy, call a roll, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Uh, Item C, presentation on Clean Sweep program for Jefferson County.
Good evening. My main job here tonight is to thank the city of Lake Mills. The Solid Waste Committee of Jefferson County really appreciates the support you have given us for our programs, and, um, we can't thank you how much it means to us. We're also going to ask you if you could please put our schedule on your website, if there's a space for it, because we're finding that those cities and communities that do that, it helps get the message out to the residents of the county. Oh, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Sharon Earhart, Clean Sweep Solid Waste Specialist of Jefferson County. Tonight, I brought along five posters, so if there's any place in the city that you think it'll help to advertise them or post them, we'd appreciate it. And I also brought you a whole bunch of brochures with, uh, a chemical schedule inside, and I hope the people in the audience, I'll set them on the table when I leave, will take one, because we're really encouraging people to participate. I have to tell you that probably Lake Mills is the third-highest participation in the Clean Sweep events. For some reason, your residents seem to like to come. You, there used to be a gentleman from Lake Mills that I could count on him to call me every year. His name was Eric. I can't remember his last name. Eric would call me up, make an appointment for Clean Sweep, and said, "Don't worry, I'll canvass the neighborhood," and he did. He'd go up and down the streets of his neighborhood, wherever he lived, bring all their stuff along to this Clean Sweep for his neighbors. But I haven't heard from Eric for about two, three years, so I don't know if the gentleman moved or what happened to Eric, but he was a very good participant. And that's the thing with Clean Sweep, we don't care how many people's stuff you bring, we just want it out of the waste stream and disposed it properly. And as you know, there is a drop point for drugs in your police station, and I think your police chief and the sheriff have worked out a good deal. Sometimes, they call him, and he picks up the drugs, and sometimes, one of your officers takes them to Jefferson County. And as far as I know, there aren't any problems. If there is, you can give me a call, and I'll try to work it out with the sheriff. So, and as far as we know, all the drug spots are very well, um, people use them. We're finding that most of the police stations are emptying them weekly. Um, last year, we disposed of over 3,000 pounds of drugs, and that's, we empty them, we sort and empty, so you're talking containers like that, full of pills, some cough medicine, so you can bring anything you want. We just really appreciate the support, and like I said, I think you're the third-largest participant, the city of Lake Mills, and that would be the town and the city, I keep track of numbers. I'm also here to answer any questions you might have about our program. Do you know about the electronics and appliance drop sites? I, you probably, as a city, you have bulk day or something like that, where the residents can put stuff out. I don't know who your waste taller is, but if for some reason, they don't pick up a refrigerator or they don't pick up a TV, or if they charge your residents extra for that, send them to Jefferson, Watertown, or Fort Atkinson. They can participate at any one of those sites, and it's free. And if you find something laying in your streets or something that somebody decided to dump instead of disposing of properly, definitely take it to one of those sites. They're open to everyone, that's why we have them. It doesn't cost the county any money, so please take advantage of them. And if there's any questions from the residents, I'm here to answer questions, and thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad you brought that up about the drugs, because the city definitely wants to keep those out of the wastewater treatment plant.
That's important, and the other thing, what I've been learning a lot from the sheriff, and I, I went to the big heroin seminar in Fort Atkinson, and they tell us most of our youths start taking drugs by stealing drugs from their parents, grandparents, relatives. They start out with prescription drugs, and then eventually, it leads to heroin, and from what they tell me, heroin is quite a big problem. It, it's not in the papers as much as you would think it would be, but they are telling me that 26 is like a, a traffic thing, going to Rockford to pick up the drugs, and then 94, for the people that live on the north side of 94, head to Milwaukee, so your chances of having an accident with somebody overdosing with heroin, I guess, are pretty high. So, we definitely want the people to know that they can get the stuff out of the house, and we don't care how much they bring. We don't want to know who brings it, just bring it, that's all we care about. Okay, well, thank, thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for the information.
You're, thank you, good night.
Good night.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Item D is the public hearing for the zoning code and map ordinance.
Uh, do we need to open the public hearing formally? I don't know how your standard process is.
Just declare that the public hearing is open and invite anybody from the public that wants to comment to come to the podium.
What she said. Any, the public hearing is open, and anybody wants to address the, uh, the council regarding the, the, um, the zoning code or the map ordinance, please come forward. See, we have Pam here and Wayne.
Do you want to hear from Dustin first now?
Yeah. Dustin?
Certainly.
Work your magic.
As you know, we went through kind of a first iteration, uh, working with the Plan Commission a few years back. Uh, when we got through the public hearing process, there were kind of a number of issues that were, were raised, and the council had requested that the, uh, Plan Commission had to revisit the code to address those, those concerns. The Plan Commission was quite diligent over the last, really, two years, um, on a monthly basis, conducting a series of workshops, um, with the Plan Commissioners and any interested members of the public, business community, et cetera, to come out, talk about specific issues in the code. I will say that the, uh, Plan Commission was equally diligent in, in redlining areas where they felt, um, we could, uh, could strike language to streamline certain, whether it was processes or some of the language, um, to, to try to make the, the code as, as clear and concise as we could. We added a number of graphics to try to make sure that some of the regulatory issues were, were again clear. I, I think we have a much better document based upon the input that we had received, um, again, after the first iteration, and then, uh, through this, um, subsequent involvement process. Uh, we certainly did get business community members, just interested parties, um, who, um, brought forward options to, to evaluate. Uh, the Plan Commission certainly had a number of lengthy meetings grappling with key issues. Uh, Mr. Foster can certainly attest to, to some of those, but in the end, um, I think we have a code that really will work well for, for the community. Um, there, there is a corresponding zoning map, um, that is, is a part of this. Uh, but again, the, the Plan Commission was quite diligent to make sure that we had a, a code that is tailored to Lake Mills, that the code, um, is, um, has a great deal of common sense injected into it and built upon really the, the important issues and, and values of the city of Lake Mills. I don't know if there's any specific questions about it or public has. I think Mr. Foster would like to add?
There is, yeah, there is, there's, there's a specific one, and Diane brought it up last meeting, and I wasn't very articulate.
And I, yeah, I have gotten the solution for...
You've gotten your answer on it.
We can bring it up under the item. I can do that under the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to address the council? If not, I'll close public hearings on the zoning code and map ordinance and move to Item E, Ordinance 131, uh, 139, I'm sorry. Betsy, would you, um, this, would you read the title, please? This will be the second reading.
Ordinance 1139, recreating Title 10 zoning regulations and approving zoning map.
No, Mike. Thank you for being so diligent and...
Yep, I didn't want to forget about it.
And, right, I would not. I did get feedback from staff, and, um, also, I guess Pam was contacted about the figure 2.1 in, on page 2-dash-2. From what I understand, what I need to do is request that figure 2.1 be removed because it is not in compliance with the wording in the thing. And there's a reference to it on B1, the bottom of B1 on page 2.1, it says, "As illustrated in Figure 2.1," so we'd also have to fix that wording. But if Dustin wants to, or Vicki, somebody else wants to speak to that, that, that figure should not have been in there. Am I correct?
I can certainly discuss that. This, um, this was an issue that the Plan Commission grappled with quite readily, and there was certainly a divide among the commissioners on what was appropriate and what wasn't appropriate. As you can see, the original language at the bottom of, um, page 2-dash-1, there is a reference to when that language was adopted, that was in 2005. Um, and from a staff perspective and a number of commissioners, that language has worked quite well for the community. Um, and really, it says, "You can't put a, a garage or a shed in your front yard." That's, in a nutshell, that's what it's telling you. Um, there were, um, a, a commissioner or two that were concerned about some of the challenging properties, um, in the community, that, that may be the only option available to them. And if that were the case, from the staff's perspective... And if that were the case from the staff's perspective, you know, that's something that would be certainly eligible for a variance process because
Right, exactly.
The enjoyment of your property is not the same as the enjoyment of someone else's property. You have hardship or practical difficulty in complying with the regulations as they're written. We recognize, and we did strive, I think, as staff and commission, to try to ensure that property owners could improve property without having to go through an onerous regulatory process. That doesn't mean that the code is perfect for every property out there. This is one of those issues where the graphic that has been put in to try to accommodate some of the input provided by some commissioners, opened a door to some things that many of the other commissioners and the staff were not comfortable with. But there was also a point when you do need to keep the process moving along. And so from the staff's perspective, striking figure 2.1 is certainly acceptable. And should the commission decide to undertake evaluating that specific concern of garages or sheds in front yards or allowing them in certain instances, it's really something that could be done under its own.
Yes.
And
Case by case.
Absolutely.
And we're not saying they can't, but it should go through zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion then to delete figure 2.1 from the document, if I have a second.
Okay. So is there a second?
Somebody?
What do you think? You think it stays? Boy, tough one.
Well, the, okay, if I, the document does not agree with the wording. The wording on the page before says, "In no case shall an accessory structure be located directly in front of a thing." And then on the next page, you've got it saying it is. So you can't have both.
There should be, if I can add, in, where it says, "As illustrated in figure 2.1," it should read, "Except as illustrated in figure 2.1." This, boy, there was so much discussion on this specific issue. You know, a number of commissioners didn't feel that there were that many instances where there was the need to have this provisory language for accessory structures. And I think the commissioners that were in favor of this, their concern was garages. But accessory structure is also a shed. And so the way this is, someone could put a shed in a front yard and
Right.
You know, ultimately, the, you know, the board is going to determine, the council's going to determine if that should be permissible. From a staff perspective, I just felt that issue, that specific issue needs more scrutiny. And we, to hold up the entire code for one issue, I don't think is a prudent thing to do. I think that the existing language could be kept, which is the, you know, the language in, at the bottom of page 2-1, with the exception of "as illustrated in figure 2.1." And it can be revisited by the commission to start looking at those case-by-case basis, case-by-case issues, and trying to draft regulations that would apply appropriately for them.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor now. Does any, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
You want to second it? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, further discussions?
I would just like to say, I'm not against it happening. There's a lot in my ward, walking distance from my house, which was small and narrow, and they have a garage in front of their house. I don't have a problem with that because it was designed that way. What my concern was is with this diagram in here, it makes it look like anybody out of anywhere can put a storage warehouse in front of their house. And I think that's deceiving. That's not what the wording says.
If I can answer that, I would suggest as part of your motion, you strike, and C. Attorney Schmidt added this, the sentence, "In no case shall an accessory structure be located directly." It's that last sentence of B1.
Oh, okay.
Because the two really go kind of hand in hand.
If my second will agree, I would modify my motion to also strike the last sentence on the bottom of 2-1. In no case shall an accessory structure.
If I may, the other part of that paragraph is from the original ordinance from 2005. What it is saying is, you've got your principal structure and you cannot place an accessory structure, which could be a shed, any kind of a standalone, smaller building, garage, whatever, any closer to the street than where your principal structure is located. So say you built your house 30 feet back from the street, but the required yard is 20 feet back from the street. What this ordinance says is you can't be any closer than the house, which means you have to be back 30 feet. And that counts whether you're a corner lot or not. It's whatever's the street frontage. So you have to keep your house, your accessory structures no closer to the right-of-way on either side of your property for a corner or in front of your property for a regular lot than where your principal structure is. And so with that language that's in there, when you read it against the sentence that we just talked about striking, they don't work together. You know, we already have rules. And now the second sentence that was added no longer works with what the first sentence is. So you can do it either way, but my recommendation is strike that whole second sentence in there and get rid of the diagram. If the plan commission feels strongly enough that they want to revisit it, they can do that later. Or if somebody has a particular issue for their lot, they can always go to the zoning board of appeals and state why they have a hardship. And the zoning board of appeals generally listens and provides some relief from the zoning code. So for those other cases that won't work, there is an avenue available rather than opening it up. Because as Mrs. Fritsch put it to me when she talked to me this, last week about this, what would stop somebody who's got an existing detached garage located further back from the street, such as what our code calls for, from just deciding they're going to replace their garage, move it way forward towards the street, which this diagram would indicate you could do? And then that way, it opens up a bigger backyard for you. We could have that happening with how this language currently is in the code. And so to prevent that from happening throughout the city, prudence would probably say to, think about the difference between what the diagram says and what the language says because there is a disconnect between the two. And resolve it one way or another.
But the question is whether my second will
I will.
Okay. So we're, the diagram
What about the diagram?
The diagram and the sentence immediately preceding it on the bottom of page 2-1. Thank you for hearing me.
Now, I have only one question. If we do that, is there another avenue that is going to depict what the setbacks are?
There is, the setbacks are still spelled out in section three of the document for all the districts.
Okay.
That's everything I had concerns about.
Ed?
As long as there's an avenue of appeal. I don't have any questions. And we do have an avenue of appeal, right?
Sure.
And I think the reason this was in here was because there was some skepticism whether or not that avenue would work.
Was there. Right.
Okay. Let's move forward. Betsy, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
So the amendment passes, the ordinance goes to the second reading, or it goes to the third reading, which brings us to item F. This is the public hearing for the subdivision ordinance. At this time, the public hearing is open. Anybody that's wishing to address the council on the subdivision ordinances can come up to the podium. If not, Dustin?
Thank you. Again, the subdivision regulations really only can kick in, so to speak, when you want to subdivide land, whether it's a single lot or a whole new subdivision. This spells out the process by which you follow, whether it's going to the, working with the staff and going to plan commission and then coming to the council. It talks about how land is intended to be subdivided, you know, how lots are supposed to be configured, et cetera, to make sure that there's some uniformity. It does get into discussion of how to preserve important natural features when practical. And, you know, that's always something we strive for, especially in and around Lake Mills, you know, whether it's creek beds or wetlands or nice uplands and such. Then you get into the design standards of the development itself. And then it has some discussion on the developers' agreements and such that you typically employ. And then we added conservation development, which is to ensure that if someone is trying to work around some important natural features, that they're able to do so and not be penalized from a land area, that they can kind of transfer some of that density that would be in a, I'm just going to pick out woodland, instead of having them knock down the woods and put lots there, that they can say, "Well, we want to preserve that and you can move that density to the area. Maybe there's some open areas and have some additional density with the approval of the plan commission and the council." So we tried to give a little more carrot than stick to encourage high-quality development in and around the community.
Anybody wishing to address the council? Okay. Seeing none, I close the public hearing for the subdivision ordinance, move to item G, ordinance 1140. This will be the second reading. Betsy, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance 1140, recreating Title 11 subdivision regulations.
And
I just have one question for Dustin.
Yes, ma'am.
Under Title 11, is it assumed that all requirements like AODA, you know, the physical
Oh, ADA?
ADA.
Yes.
Sorry, I hate acronyms. Is it assumed that those are going to be met no matter what is in here?
That's federal law.
That's federal.
Yes.
Federal is an overlay over the top of our city, right?
Especially when it comes to ADA accessibility, absolutely. We can't, you can't undermine something that the EPA is doing. You can't undermine something that other federal agencies are doing.
Okay.
The state law gives municipalities, like when it comes to zoning, a lot of latitude determining what's best for them. But that doesn't mean you can say, "Well, we think it's best that we don't have, you know, any sidewalks and/or, you know, public access for ADA accessibility, et cetera." That will always be in place.
Okay. Good. That's the answer I wanted. Thank you.
Item H, this is a decision discussion on the memorandum of understanding LK LLC easement And I guess at this point, I would like to see if we could get a motion to table this so staff and owners could negotiate further.
Actually, I'll make a motion to table it.
I'd second it. Discussion?
I just, well, tabling isn't discussable, but is that what staff wants?
Well, one of the concerns was moving further west.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can do
Well, let's, if we approve this, this gives us some flexibility to continue to negotiate. If you don't approve this, then I have to wait until another council meeting to be able to finalize the agreement. So, you know, if we decide to move it somewhere, that may be another issue, but this one at least gives me the flexibility of being able to do this one. If you table it, then I'm, in the sense of being the deal, then I'm hung up. So I didn't, I wouldn't recommend taking, tabling. I'd recommend going ahead and debating it. And if you decide to approve it, then that's one option that I have available to me. If, you know, if she, you heard their proposals and we've been back and forth on a couple of them and we'll continue to negotiate. And I don't plan on negotiating here in this meeting right now, but I would like to have as many options available to me as possible.
Steve, you lost me. How does tabling it take away those options?
Because I, I couldn't finalize the deal. This basically says that you guys conceptually understand and approve it and that if she accepted this, we could finalize the deal and I could get my easement start. If I have to wait until another meeting, then I have to hold off construction and we have construction sitting there ready to go. So.
Are you talking about a second instruction for the engineer or the original one?
The second one.
Yeah. And I'm not sure that the property owner is aware of the second one.
Oh, yeah, she is.
Okay.
We, she's had it longer than I've had it and we had discussions about it yesterday. So, you know, it's not something that would be guaranteed, that we might go a different direction, but at least if this one were accepted, I could get the contractor going tomorrow. If not, then we'll, you know, then we're still negotiating. We have other things that we have to deal with.
Do we need to amend any of the language?
No, you just need to go with the
Point of, point of, point of order here. We either have to vote on a table or we have to remove the motion for table because that is a privileged motion.
Right. Let me follow up on that, Diane. And Steve, at this point, you want to remove your
We can always do another motion to table.
Yeah, I can do that.
But we can't talk about this under this motion.
Right. In that case, I'll remove my motion to table right now.
And we did not.
Remove the second. And remove the second. So at this, at this, let me carry on, Diane. Thank you.
Yeah.
At this, at this time, Betsy, would you, would you read motion 14-10-2-1? And let's leave the
Legal description?
Legal description of the land parcel out.
Okay. Motion 141021 concerning the acquisition of property rights from LK LLC and approving the statement to the construction engineer, whereas the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has determined it is necessary to reconstruct pump station 13 along Tyranina Park Road. And whereas said construction will necessitate the acquisition of 1,635 square feet of permanent utility easement for the construction of pump station 13 and 3,105 square feet of temporary limited easement from LK LLC for construction purposes over and upon a portion of the following described premises to wit, "A permanent utility easement for the right to enter upon said land for the purpose of constructing, installing, repairing, altering, maintaining, and operating thereon utility facilities." Said easement consists of, and that's where the legal description is, "containing 1,635 square feet more or less, a temporary limited easement consisting of a 20-foot wide strip along the west, south, and east sides of the above described permanent utility easement containing 3,105 square feet more or less. Said easement is for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill slopes, including for such purpose the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon and the right of ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable, subject to all other easements and restrictions recorded and unrecorded. Whereas the permanent utility easement is for the right to enter upon said land for the purpose of constructing, installing, repairing, altering, maintaining, and operating thereon utility facilities. And whereas temporary limited easement is for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill sloping, including for such purpose the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon and the right of ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable. And whereas the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property to be prepared by its consulting appraiser. And whereas the city has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to approve the statement of construction engineers' exchange for the permanent utility and temporary limited easements from the owner of such property and to take such other actions as deemed necessary deemed necessary to acquire the permanent and temporary easements for the purpose of constructing the improvements. Now therefore, be it moved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby declare and determine that the permanent and temporary limited easement to construct the pump station 13 is necessary, be it further moved that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city the statement to construction engineer.
You have a motion of acceptance of motion 14-10-2-1.
Okay, so move.
And a second, please.
For purposes of discussion, second.
Discussion?
The, let's put it this way, we've done the appraisal, we've got an estimate, we've approved amount of money to do, most of the other options are going to involve money and an evaluation of how much it's going to cost and what is going to be our best option. This one is a very unique situation in that it isn't really cash, it has cash value to the property owner, but to us, it is a commitment that says we recognize and understand that there are these options available to them and we would not limit her options in any form in the future. And so, that's basically what you're committing to, it's different than some of the other items. All the other items that we're negotiating are basically cash-related. And so, I can, I can do those without having to come back, but this one I cannot. So, if you approve this one here, then it gives me that option of whatever one she decides is in her best interest and the city decides is in their best interest.
So, physical location can move, it's not a big deal?
Well, no, it's a big deal. Physical location and we're evaluating the costs. And so, let's say, moving to the west costs $100,000. Moving to the east costs $200,000. Building in the existing right-of-way costs $25,000. And then she is going through and we say, well, we're not going to move to the west, it's too expensive, we're not moving to the east, it's too expensive, we're either going to build in the existing right-of-way or... So, you can take a cash payment for the easement or you can take the agreement for the driveway for the easement or, you know, we're going to go through and do those types of evaluations and we'll sit down with her and negotiate. This is the only one that I would have to come back for council approval. And I gave you the timeline, we were basically already out there trying to start, so the sooner I can get this done, the better. So, this one, if you approve it, gives me that flexibility.
Why is time so important?
Because to get it constructed, they're out there already and they've started, so if they basically stop and we're stopped for 60 days, they're not going to be back until next summer. So, then we got a contractor who's now going to come back and ask for a lot more money.
Okay, so we already have issued a contract for this. That's number one. Number two, if we were to move it to the site that was in discussion earlier tonight, would that require re-engineering, things like that, too?
Yes.
That's the issue.
Right, but it, in that case, it's basically a balance of financial issues. We've approved a certain amount of money to be able to move forward with the purchase of that and I can start wearing those out and saying, you know, rather than going through the JO process and all these other things, would this be the most beneficial option? Would this be the most beneficial option with this one? Those are easy because I have the money approved for that already. This is one that steps up and above, it's not really a cash issue, it's a permitting issue, which only the council could do in this type of situation.
When you say permitting, explain that.
In the future, when a site plan comes in and she, and the site plan is laid out, she's already got one driveway. The county would not want to issue another driveway unless there's some compelling reason within the site plan. Generally, there are compelling reasons within a site plan to issue a second driveway. Now, they get, that's going to be controlled to be in a certain spot because it has to be a certain 100 feet away from the other one, it has to be a certain distance from the property line, has to have a certain amount of site clearance, it has to go through a certain amount of issues that we have to look at. So, basically, she gets a permit from us and the county to be able to go there. The county said if we issue it, they'll issue it. So, but I'm not going to, I can't commit the city in the long-term on a site plan that isn't prepared.
Sure.
So, that's what you guys have to do.
Okay, in lieu of that...
Mr. Scharr, it's my understanding that part of the negotiations might be moving the location of the easement, so this...
Not the easement, well, yes, but she would gift that to us, then.
Okay, because this motion approves a specific location for the easement.
Right, but that's only for this project, which is the granting of the agreement on the driveway.
Which is on the east side.
Yes.
Okay.
So, if there's an area that's gifted to us...
Yeah, that's irrelevant.
Then we throw this out?
Yep, the whole, the whole thing is gone, it's just part of the options and the negotiating for me.
But by passing that, we're not, we're not saying you have to do this.
We're not living to...
Right, okay, I get it. All right.
Anything else?
She may not accept it anyways, so it would be irrelevant, but at least I have an option of, you know, if she finds that, if we come back and say, well, it's going to be, you know, we're not going to move it to the east or the west, we're going to build in the right-of-way, she may say, I don't want that option, she may then say, well, I'll take the driveway deal.
Right, and that's all something that you can do.
That's part of negotiating.
Okay.
Betsy, do you want to roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Item I, discussion decision to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Mead and Hunt for the design of the Lake Mills Dam. And... Let's see. Is there, there's no motion or anything?
Yeah, motion 14-10-2-2.
14-10-2-2.
Where'd I have it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, Betsy, would you read that, please?
Motion 14-10-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for all design work related to the Lake Mills Dam replacement, whereas the city council of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes, has established certain standards and procedures for the maintenance of public infrastructure within the corporate limits of the city of Lake Mills, and whereas the city council of Lake Mills is responsible for the maintenance of the physical elements of the city, including repairs that in the city council's judgment bear relation to the health and welfare of the city, and whereas the city manager has received a proposal from Mead and Hunt Incorporated for a services contract that provides all professional engineering associated with the replacement of the Lake Mills Dam and spillway, and has forwarded that proposal to the city council for its review and recommendation regarding said proposal. Now therefore, be it moved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills hereby approves the agreement for professional engineering associated with the replacement of the Lake Mills Dam and spillway from Mead and Hunt Incorporated, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof and authorizes the city manager to sign the agreement.
A motion of acceptance?
Make a motion to accept.
And a second, please.
Second.
Discussion? Have a...
Go ahead, Diane.
Am I correct in assuming that this is basically just giving them the work, right, on this, to design this?
To design the dam.
My question, Steve, is on that, why, we have them kind of on a retainer, so to speak, it's not true retainer, but I mean, we work with them, designated as our engineers, but we don't put this out, the proposals out for bids or anything like that, we're just going to, I mean, they're going to set the rate and we have no, the charge for it and we're stuck with that, I guess, we have no negotiation on that part. That's a concern I have. I mean, if we were to put it out and say, who do we have, I think we'd want to go with Mead and Hunt because they're the specialists in the, in the dam world, but, you know, do we, I mean, I guess we've just gone ahead and said we're going, we're going to use them and whatever they charge, they'll charge.
Well, it's a combination of issues that go forward in that, and I think that you would find historically when we discuss this, it's kind of the existing knowledge base. Warren has done the dam inspections, he did the dam failure analysis, he did a lot of the other work related to the dam and the spillway. And to be able to recreate that work would cost more money than you could gain by going out and getting a new person. We have a long-term relationship with them. Warren is probably, I think if you call up Rob Davis, Warren would, would be one of the ones he'd say is your best bet to do the work. So, from that standpoint, we felt very comfortable in doing that, and from the second we decided to offer the dam failure analysis and the dam inspection, I thought that this would be the direction we'd ultimately had.
Hey, thanks. I have a second question, I guess that one is then, as we authorize, if we approve this tonight, Mead and Hunt to go ahead with that, do we still, as a council, have the opportunity for acceptance or input or whatever in the final design?
Well, this one...
Or do they give us the design and then we're just, you know, we have to accept that even though as a council member I may not agree with everything in it?
Well, then that's a discussion that we had about the way the contract is written. Warren came back and I've been pressed on Warren to get the document out and get it out, and he had, he was struggling with certain issues in the way we structured the proposal to him. And so, this dam doesn't have the set fee and contingency in it. This is a pure timing materials, based on what they normally charge us, which is lower than what you normally see in a fee package, and it allows you to spend as much time as you feel you need to be able to expand or contract the dam in discussions with the engineer. And so, this is basically a really flexible deal for the council to be able to say, hey, we want to look at as many options as possible and then be able to select one. And so, that's the way this is structured, based on the fact that we kind of said, well, we're going to pick an option that's...
Yeah, we picked the option, kind of gave them direction.
But within that, Rudy, we have, there's a lot of different things, components of it.
Right, and, 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 what we got to remember is that every, every design that we ask them to do is going to be more money, so...
And that's, that, this contract allows that.
Right.
This contract allows us to come back and select as many different designs as we want. And I don't know, I included it in the packet, but we got it, we didn't ask for January, we asked for April. So, if you guys work with Warren and you go back and forth, you can work on multiple designs, the only issue is, as Rudy has noted, the more changes we go back and forth on, the higher the cost.
Right, and I guess that's, that's where I'm going with this, is that maybe at some, at some finite point, then we need to see what direction we're going in and maybe, maybe give direction to that direction and kind of steer them to the, to where we want them to go.
Oh, I would...
Instead of coming back with, no, I don't like this, let's go, let's do another one.
I agree, and if they're going to look and say, this is an option and this, and this, and this, and this, and these are, I'll just pick a number, say, there's five components, and we can say, well, we want all five, or we want four out of the five or whatever, then we're not having to go back and redesign.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm looking for.
Right.
And we also got to remember that, that we're working with the grant, so we have a time limit.
I got...
So, we got to be prudent with our time.
Yeah, we have to have it built next summer. But we can, we can submit our design to the DNR by April 1st. Now, I prefer to have it, knowing how bids work, and the earlier in the year you get the bids out, the better the bid numbers.
Right.
I would prefer to have ours in sometime in mid-February and be able to get our bids out in January. That being said, you know, depending on how much time we spend in designing certain features of the dam, we may run up until April, but we've given our...
Well, I would like to see, I would like to see us starting getting, interacting soon with the design, and that way we can, we can kind of narrow it in and focus it to the, where we want to finally go without...
Well, and we need to have, I agree with you, we need to have that up front, not after the end and saying, oh, we don't like that, we don't like that, start over, we need to have it up front.
Yeah, I want to, we need to be part of this as it, as it evolves.
Yeah, the, probably the most significant feature was how the spillway is structured. I think coming out of the, the, when we selected the options, we went with kind of B with a flexible C. And so, that, but, you know, what you look at as far as overall dam construction, you can, that's the way this contract is structured, you can, you know, kind of tell them what you want to see and work from there.
Are we looking at work sessions or...
Yeah, I was just going to say.
You know, I...
Oh, yeah, we're going to have to have work sessions.
Because maybe under other business tonight, we should talk about starting to schedule those as soon as we're done with budget, because the sooner we get those work sessions done, the sooner we can get all the rest of this moving along.
Right.
Right, but first, first we've got to get some input from the engineer, so he's going to have to come up with some pictures. So, I guess it...
Well, do we know what would be this, how soon can Warren be ready? I mean, when would he be ready to sit down and start having those talks?
This says he's going to start working right away. I know for a fact that on Thursday he was in Oklahoma, on Friday he was in Kansas, and Saturday he was flying back writing this agreement. So, when he has, and Warren is a high-demand person, I mean, there aren't very many people with Warren's types of skills throughout the nation, and so, he's a high-demand person and, so I'm hoping that we could start getting something relevant done in December.
I agree.
So, we wouldn't need to, I agree with you, Diane, on get it on the agenda, but until we know from Warren, there's no need to put it on our agenda.
It's kind of futile right now, yeah, but just be, just if the council remain flexible knowing that this is a, this is going to be a, you know, a living, a living thing, so we're going to have to be able to jump in there quick and give input.
It looks to me like this contract that we're looking at is flexible enough to meet our needs and...
Well, we have the option to have input on it, then I'd like to call the question.
Right. Anything else?
I agree.
Let's call the roll.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Oh, here's your, I found it.
You got it?
Okay. This is item J, the big one, this is discussion decision on the list of the Main Street project issue from the DOT, and just to give the background, that the Public Works Board went through this, we spent a lot of time on, on answering these questions and hopefully we can get right through it.
I have a question. In our packet was a motion 14-10-2-3. Now, that's just one of the things that we have to take care of under this item, am I correct?
Correct.
Is that the one we should start with?
This is the one that this, Vicky Romanesco from WISTOT asked that be, it be in writing. Now, I think they're going to ask for a couple of other ones in writing before we're done, but this one she needed right away to be able to start street design.
Okay.
And before we do that, we're going to have to quickly go through the, the questions.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, let's do that anyways, let's go through the questions quickly and then, then we'll, we'll read the motion and then we'll be able to fill in the blanks.
Well, the motion that's in front of us, though, is only about the parking lanes. Everything else, we're going to have to do our own motions for, am I correct?
I think, I think a lot of them tie together, though.
They all tie up.
So, that, because of the bike lanes affect the parking lanes, affect the, now, it's clear in the survey that we've done that one bike lane, or one parking lane seems to be the preference.
Okay, so what I'm saying, though, is, my thing I'm questioning is, I don't have a problem with the motion that's in the packet, but I think it only, it only addresses parking lanes.
Yes, and that's it.
Okay, so anything else we want to do, we need to do separate motions that are not in our packet?
I don't think, I don't think we're going to do any other motions other than, other than 2-3 on this.
You can do other motions, but you do not have to. This one I needed.
Right.
And this one she wanted in writing, so I did it in writing. The other ones are there.
To address Diane's concern is that in order to... To, to address Diane's concern is that in order to do this one, I think you need the background of some of these others, these other questions on here, and again, it goes to the number of parking lanes, the width of the, the-
No, I think it's pretty clear.
Well, we got just the motion for, for parking in front of us, and as Steve said, they may come back on some of these other ones and ask us for to put it in writing, and we'll have another motion.
I'll make them, I'm going to move motion fourteen ten two three.
Listen, let's not get ahead of it, let's not get ahead of it, let's go ahead and, and Betsy, if you'd read fourteen dash ten dash two dash three?
Motion fourteen ten two three, authorizing the city manager to send this motion to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation regarding the construction of parking lanes on South Main Street. Be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows, that the residents of South Main Street have been surveyed regarding the preferred number of parking lanes, that the council has considered the data and evidence and evaluated the information and selected blank parking lanes. The city clerk is authorized to send this motion to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation indicating the council's preference on parking lanes and to take such actions as necessary to incorporate blank parking lanes in the construction of South Main Street. The city council does hereby approve the motion and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
We have a motion of acceptance of fourteen ten two dash three.
Make that a motion once we fill it in, yes.
And I'll second once we fill it in.
Okay, and the, the fill-in is going to be one?
One, one parking lane.
Make the motion out.
Yeah, so-
Well, do we know that?
Yeah, we know that from the charts.
I mean, we have discussed that, I mean, you look at it and we've got the, I assume the north side people saying, put it on the south side, or put it on their side, and the south side saying, put it on their side, and then we have the no parking ranking the highest, but we're going to need parking there, I can't see how we wouldn't have parking on, on South Main.
You have to take it kind of though, you have, you have two groups of one lane, so that's, that was the largest number.
That's the big thing.
The majority is one.
The majority is one. Even when you add no parking and two lanes, it still doesn't-
We're not picking the side, we're just picking one lane.
Just one lane.
Aren't they going to need to know what side though?
Yes, they will want to know what side, but, but that-
Now, let's move on, let's, let's-
You can add that to the motion, or you can just leave that, what they need to know is the width.
Now, they're looking at the width.
Right now, they're looking at the width.
Right.
Because bike lanes will be there.
Ed, are you willing to put in one there?
Well, does one go in both of them then, section?
Yep.
Little sections?
Yep.
Okay, yes, make that your motion then.
And I agree, I agree with the second.
Any other discussion?
It's August, not July, or not August, it's October.
Betsy, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Kirkkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
So that goes through as one parking lane in both of those, correct?
Yes.
Item K, appointment of elected inspectors?
Don't you want to go through that motion and at least?
I don't know, maybe it's on the table once we come, and then we may do the survey.
Oh.
That's probably, yeah.
We don't have to do anything more on that, do we?
Nope. Going to item K, appointment of election inspectors.
Okay, so we got that one done. Survey's done.
Betsy?
Survey's done.
Fourteen dash ten dash two dash four.
Motion fourteen ten two four, appointment of election inspectors, whereas Wisconsin statutes provide for the appointment of election inspectors, and whereas there is a need to appoint additional election inspectors for the 2014-15 term, and whereas section 7.304 of the Wisconsin statutes allows the two dominant parties to submit a list of names from which appointments can be made, and whereas the Jefferson County political parties have submitted lists of names for appointment, be it therefore moved by city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows, that the city council does, has reviewed the attached list of election inspectors recommended for appointment and/or reappointment by the city clerk, that the city council confirms the city clerk's recommended election inspectors, the city council does hereby confirm the election inspectors, and does hereby authorize the president to sign the motion.
And we have our motion of acceptance.
Make the motion.
And a second please?
Second.
Discussion?
Read the names there, or?
Yeah, Betsy, would you read those names?
Larry Jelkin and John Berman.
Okay. No discussion, Betsy, would you call the vote please?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkkevich?
Aye.
Maybe we should thank them for wishing to, sorry, serve as, same with the people on the next one.
Yep.
Motion passed five zero.
Appointment of special voting deputies, and this is a motion fourteen dash ten dash two dash five, Betsy if you would.
Motion fourteen ten two five, appointment of special voting deputies, whereas Wisconsin statutes provide for the appointment of special voting deputies, and whereas there is a need to appoint special voting deputies for the 2014-15 term, and whereas under state statute 6.857, absentee voting in person inside residential care facilities in qualified retirement homes shall be conducted by special voting deputies, and whereas the Lake Mills city clerk has submitted a list of names for appointment, be it therefore moved by city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows, that the city council has reviewed the attached list of special voting deputies recommended for appointment by the city clerk, that the city council confirms the city clerk's recommended special voting deputies, the city clerk does hereby confirm the special voting deputies, and does hereby authorize the president to sign the motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion, names, Betsy? Would you read the names please?
Yeah, just a second.
Catching up on the minutes.
I'm sorry.
The names are Ruth Hugner, Melissa Quest, and Elizabeth Milbrough.
Okay, any discussion? Betsy, if you'd call the vote please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, motion fourteen ten dash two dash six, Betsy if you'd read that?
Motion fourteen ten two six, confirmation of city manager appointment, whereas Wisconsin statutes and the Lake Mills charter ordinance provides for the appointment of certain positions by the city manager, and whereas there is a need to appoint the position of treasurer finance director, and whereas the appointee has been performing the duties for the position since July 14, 2014, and whereas the city manager has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to appoint Elizabeth Milbrough as treasurer finance director, be it therefore moved by city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows, that the city council confirms the appointment of Elizabeth Milbrough as treasurer finance director, the city council does hereby confirm the city manager appointment and does hereby authorize the president to sign the motion.
Do we have a motion of confirmation of the city manager's appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Steve, can I ask a question Rudy, please?
Steve, with approval of Elizabeth as finance director, then we would advertise for a clerk?
That's not, we have to go through the posting internally first, and then depending on what happens there, we might go out, might not, if we determine that we have someone that's qualified and-
Then that individual would be-
Moved up.
Moved up, and we'd be looking outside or again internally for filling that.
Yep, it just keeps kind of triggering.
Till we finally wind up outside, all right, thank you.
And Betsy, if you'd call the vote please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Enthusiastic aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirkkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
With pleasure, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, by the way.
Thank you.
Party is being held where?
At the next election.
Yeah.
Because remember, now she's got to be appointed a special, deputy clerk.
Yeah.
Because someone's got to be at the election.
Okay, resolution fourteen fifty-six, authorizing the nine-one-one joint powers agreement with the Jefferson County Emergency Services. Betsy? If you would?
Resolution fourteen fifty-six, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows, that the agreement for purchase of dispatching services between the city of Lake Mills and the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department joint powers agreement, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof, is hereby approved, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement and to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department 411 South Center Avenue, Jefferson, Wisconsin, be it therefore resolved this 21st day of October 2014 by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign the resolution.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
What happened? I'm losing control here. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I made the motion, and I thought Diane seconded it, but she-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you guys got me confused.
I thought that was Rudy, I didn't realize it was you, I was not looking at it.
Okay, so we have a, we have a-
Okay, I'll second it.
I was intending to move us quickly along.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right, any discussion, this is book, this regular yearly thing.
Yep.
Okay, so Betsy, if you'd call a vote please?
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And more housekeeping, this is a resolution fourteen dash fifty-seven, this, Betsy if you would?
Resolution fourteen fifty-seven, authorizing the city manager to execute the master agreement with WPPI for participation in member services, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows, that the master agreement for participation in WPPI energy member services, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof, are hereby approved, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement in substantially the same form as approved in section one above, and to take such actions as necessary to implement such agreement, be it further resolved that the city council does hereby approve the master agreement for participation in WPPI energy member services, and authorizes the council president to sign the resolution.
Do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second please?
Second.
Any discussion, this is another housekeeping, Betsy, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Kirkkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And we go to item P, ordinance 1136A, this will be the second reading, Betsy if you'd read the title please?
Ordinance 1136A, amending ethics code financial disclosure requirements.
That'll go to the second reading, or the third reading, this brings us to item Q, ordinance 1137, this is also the second reading, Betsy, would you read the title?
Ordinance 1137, amending school parking zones.
This'll go to the third reading, ordinance 1138, amending council vice president chair duties and compensation. I guess I read the title. This is the second reading.
Ordinance 1138, amending council vice president compensation and duties.
This'll go on to the third reading. Brings us to item S, ordinance 1141, floodplain ordinance and map, this is the first reading, Betsy, would you read the title?
Ordinance 1141, floodplain ordinance and map.
This'll go to the second reading.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm slowing down, looking for the thing here. Where is the floodplain map in the office?
It's on the website, and you can also go to FEMA, but it's a lot easier to get it off our website.
Okay.
It's a panel, so the actual map is like this, and there are actually two of them, so it's easier, I just sent them and they're on the website, and then it's easier to draw them up on your computer and read them, so.
And I have one question, because I didn't see the map, but where are the campgrounds that are being referred to in 2.4, the pub, do we have campgrounds in our floodplain map?
No.
No.
No, this is a model ordinance that the DNR says if you adopt the model ordinance, you can do it fairly painlessly, if you're going to try to make changes to it, it's going to slow down the process and we're under a tight timeline, so I put together the model ordinance.
I thought maybe there were campsites in Lake Mills I didn't know about, so I just thought I better ask.
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, where would those be?
Yeah, I mean-
Item T, this is ordinance 1142, Betsy, would you read the title?
Ordinance 1142, 2015 general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
This is the first reading, it will go on to the second reading, and ordinance 1143, Betsy?
Ordinance 1143, 2015 capital budget.
This is also the first reading, it will go on to the second, brings us to item nine, recommendations for future agendas, Diane, I think you had one?
I don't think we do anymore.
Okay, now, before we go any further on that, Mr. President, can I go back to these last two?
Sure.
Ordinance 1142 and ordinance 1143, which is the general and, and capital budget, we did not read through those, I don't believe that we needed to, but I think the public should be aware that they're on our website under our documents, correct Steve?
Correct.
So if they're interested, they can go there to see them, or they could stop in at city hall and pick up a copy.
Right, and actually, there'll be a As, because the numbers that came in today will change those.
Yeah, so anybody wishing to see those should wait a week and then come in and get those because of the new budget, or they're-
Yeah, and we'll hang them on the website again, right on the front.
And along, and along with that, the next meeting we have is the public hearing?
No, work session.
Well, we have a work session, the public is welcome to attend.
The 18th is a public hearing. The 18th is a public hearing.
Eighteenth, okay, and just, okay, I'm so sorry, I'm getting myself confused, okay. So the public can put, if they want to come and speak to it at the public hearing on the 18th of November?
Right.
Got it, okay.
And they can, they're also welcome to sit in on the work session on the 4th.
Right.